Everyone and welcome to the March 5th School Committee Meeting. I'd like to welcome everyone here and have everyone know that the meeting will be broadcast, or is being broadcast live right now on Foxborough Cable Access, and it's also being recorded. Sorry for the late start, a little bit of technical difficulties beginning, but we are here. So first on the agenda is, we have Michelle Paxton is not in attendance tonight, so there's four of us here in person. First on the agenda was open to public comment, and I checked the list and did not see anyone. Did I miss anyone coming in late? Seeing none and hearing none, thank you very much. Next is approval of the minutes, and I think we have two of them in the packet. Anyone like to motion? You want to start with the Budget Subcommittee? That's the first one I saw.
I would like to make a motion to approve the Budget Subcommittee meeting minutes from December 7 of 2023.
Second.
Seconded by Brent. So motion by Sarah, seconded by Brent for the December 7 minutes. Any further discussion? All in favor to approve those minutes? Four zero vote, thank you very much. And then the second set of minutes is the February 6 meeting of the committee. Accept a motion to approve those.
Can I make a motion to approve the meeting minutes from the February 6, 2024, School Committee meeting for the town of Foxborough?
Second.
Motion by Sarah, seconded by Brent for the February 6 minutes. Any further discussion? All in favor? One, two, three, four, four zero vote, thank you very much. And that's all we have for minutes. So next on the agenda, we have our Teaching and Learning Highlight, and we have some guests here that have been very patiently waiting. It's great to see some students and the members of the team, and so I'll let them lead, or Joe, if you'd like to lead as well.
Come on. They all want to come up.
Yeah.
Come on up, and yeah.
This is very exciting. You want to come up. Super special.
Otherwise, we have to call you out.
Hi. Want to start, or? Yeah. Hi, so happy to be here. Thanks for having us. I'm just going to kind of set up kind of what we went through to have a gymnastics team, because we have one now, and most people know that by now, nobody knew that in December, but they know now. It was a really cool process. I was originally contacted by a parent in the spring asking about the possibility of having a program. I was even given a list of like eight or nine names to start with. It was great, but it's really hard to add any program from pure scratch when you're not planning to have it. Things we have to consider, can we afford it without a budget, without already being in the budget? Is it a sustainable thing? Are we going to do it once, or are we going to continue to do this over time? Obviously, we need a coach and a location to practice. There is a budget for a coach in the contract, so that was easy. We didn't have anything in the pre-existing budget for our facility, but we worked with Mr. Yuckner over to my left, and you know, we found the funds to do that, so thanks to Bill for his role in that. Then I just held an interest meeting with the kids during the fall. All I had, like I said, was a photocopied list of eight or nine kids, and we'll see what happens. And we had about 13 to 16 kids show up. We ended up with 12 on the team, which is fantastic. From a sustainability standpoint, importantly, it was only one senior, which is great, so that means we can have this again going forward. And obviously, we have to worry about a school our size, so many kids do a sport that we didn't want to jeopardize another program, to add another one and have two that don't quite make it. So only one kid switched over from another sport, which was terrific, too. Then, of course, where am I going to find a coach? I don't know anything about gymnastics. I've seen it on TV at the Olympics, and my wife watches all the college meets on TV, but outside of that, I don't know anything about it. So another parent on the team contacted me, suggested Nikki before I even had a chance to post the opening on the MIA website, so the turnaround was great. If you have any questions for Nikki, I'll just set it up, I'll make it easy on you. Nikki has a lot of high school and high level experience, and has worked in different local gyms and knows a ton of local gymnasts. So we had to find a gym, there are a lot of them, but they're really in a high demand between the high school teams and all the club programs. So no Hockamock schools have in-house gymnastics. If you're picturing the gymnastics equipment in your gym, you know, when I was a kid, when you were a kid, that's not how it is anymore. There's some schools like that, but it's really limited how many do it, really in the region, I guess, at the high school level, in the high school itself. So there's a big demand for gym space. We went to Arnold's in Mansfield, and then we did share a time while we were there with some other Hawk schools. We shared with Taunton and OA.
KP Sharon.
KP Sharon. It was a lot of other schools show up at the same time, so we're working in a pretty tight space, but it was, it worked out great. Nikki added Alex Highland from Foxborough as a volunteer assistant coach, and then we were kind of off and running. The parents pulled together as boosters right away, ordered uniforms with Alex's help, actually got him turned around really fast. They obviously wanted to look like a team, boosters applied for a Partners in Patriotism grant, got backpacks and jackets, so you know, it was a real program. It was no real kind of transition phase, it became a real program really fast, so that was great. And in the end, how'd we do? We finished 3-5 on the season against all pre-existing Hockamock teams that have had gymnastics programs for some time, so that's fantastic. And the girls finished 6th at the Hawk Championships overall, and Ashley and Maddie advanced to the States, I believe it was. You guys call it different things, different sports call it different things, two States in the vault, which is amazing for year one, considering we didn't have gymnastics four months ago, and here we are. So that's kind of my summary of the program. I asked Coach and our captains to come up, if you had any easy questions for them, I promised them it would be easy. Or me.
Or do you have anything for us? Do you want to tell us anything about your season?
I think our season went very well for our first year of having a gymnastics team. It gets really well organized, and it was really fun for all of us.
It also like became like very easy for like us to kind of like come together as a team and like get to learn like new people as well. So we also like, not only did we get like a new team, we also got like a new group of friends that we could have too.
Awesome.
It's amazing.
I'm just happy that we finally got a team together. I've been trying to get a team together since, I would say, 2000. It's been a good 10 years that we've been trying to get a team together. Alex wanted really badly to do high school gymnastics, but it was never available to her, so she went on to college and did big things, so we're super lucky to have her, too, because she was SEC Co-Scholar of the Year, and she had a very successful career, so happy to have her on, too. It's amazing.
Any questions, the committee?
What do you want? I mean, as you look forward and you look forward sustainability, I guess, I mean, we typically ask this question, because I think we want you to be hopeful. So are there things that are on your longer-term wish list that you can communicate to folks?
Yeah, so I would say that keeping a high school program is super important, because it keeps the kids in the sport.
Yeah.
A lot of them will end up leaving for a high school sport, because they want recognition, so I think that it's huge for the kids that have done it their whole life to not have to make that decision. So I think like it's just going to keep growing, because I know a lot of Foxborough kids that haven't gone through, because they didn't have anywhere to do it, like to get any kind of recognition throughout their high school career. They've all switched, I lost a lot of good athletes to track because of it.
Yeah.
The community's, sorry, the community's a lot bigger than you would think, too. It was bigger than I thought. Not that I knew, I knew kids did gymnastics, but I didn't realize until we started going to the meets and watching like how, how many kids and how many different towns do it. It's not a, it's not like a niche thing. It's, it's, there's a real, like, full community of people behind it, so.
Related to that, if I can just ask, like, what's the lay of the land there? Like, where, for the team that we have now, like, were they all, were y'all working out the same few places? Was it all over? I mean...
It's kind of like a variety of places, so like, at least like lots of people, like on, people on our team, like, a couple of us already do club, or a couple of us have already like done gymnastics in the past, but mostly, like, we all come from just like different places, mostly, yeah.
Okay. And then, follow-up. Are there, how, how do you envision the transition from eighth into ninth? Like, being able to, you know, whatever, capture, yeah, recruit, essentially, like recruitment and getting middle schoolers who are in town doing this, like, involved or just excited about it, or kind of, lack of a better term, locked in early?
That kind of happens naturally, because these kids just want it, they've done it since, most of them, I mean, how old did, you're so old, yeah. Most of them have done it since they were like 18 months old. So this is something that they've done their whole life, and they can't wait. Already the eighth graders at Arnold's are, they're like, that one's in eighth grade, this one's in seventh, like, okay, like, they know.
You already have a lineup. That's awesome. I just want to recognize the beautiful partnership between the gymnast, the school, and the parents, who are quietly sitting back there, but worked their bottoms off for their kids and the gymnast, and it's just, it's just, I've been so impressed. I've been friendly with a few of the moms, and I know some of the gymnasts, and I really just think, I'm so proud of your group, like, everyone, the parents, the students, the gymnasts, you guys, you know, at the high school, I'm just so proud, like, it's amazing that it's, that it's back. And like you said, four months ago, it was nothing, and now, here they are, like, placing in the, I just think it's amazing. I love it. Thank you. Thank you all. I'm glad that you brought this to the school. We have more opportunity, and that's what it's about.
So I'm going to echo what she just said, just thank you all for starting this. Starting a sport is very difficult in schools across the state. I see it a lot, because I'm very much engaged with that, but it's a great opportunity to start it, and I appreciate the thought process that has to go into it, because there is complexity to where the athletes come from, where are they going, and where are they coming from. I think the beauty of gymnastics, which reminds me of this, it reminds me so much of ice hockey, I run ice hockey, because you have to start skating when you're four, and what people don't know always about gymnasts, because it's done in a different fashion, quieter in a club, they don't realize that these, all these gymnasts are starting when they're four as well, too. And so it's a trick for schools, because gymnastics has fallen off a little bit in our schools in Massachusetts, but you know, they're still there. It's a trick to maintain that, because they've been doing gymnastics for 10, 11 years, and then the bottom falls out, right? There's really nowhere to go, other than club. And the true desire of a student is to represent your school. So I mean, that's really what you're doing, and for all of you girls that are here, that are just in this first step, it's huge to be the first people coming out of the gate. It really is. Because it gives, you've just given great hope to some really younger athletes that are now looking, looking up to you. So just a huge thanks. Thanks for stepping up as a coach. I mean, you obviously had the desire to do it. How to pull it off is always a frustration, but thanks for being there and being there when we needed you.
Yeah, thank you guys, too. You guys have been great.
Yeah.
Joe's been awesome.
Let's keep it going, right? And do it, really. Thank you all so very, very much.
Best of luck.
Thank you. Congratulations. Thank you for great work. Hey, Joe. Joe, before you leave, I just wanted to make sure we publicly thank you and recognize you for, I think, District 7 Masada Athletic Director of the Year. Is that correct, or what was it? Please explain it to me. What is it?
Yeah, I did, actually, I won the District 7, it's the, you put me on the spot, I forget the name of it now. No, it's the...
Something awesome.
Ted Dampco Award.
Thank you.
But I actually won the state level award as well.
Oh, that's great. Congratulations.
Thank you.
Well, that's, yeah, that's huge. So you're the state winner?
Yep.
So that every district of the nine districts in the state recommend an athletic director, and they all go into the pool, and he's been selected as the top of the nine, so that's great.
Yeah, thank you.
That's great. Thank you very much. Thank you. I was going to tell you, gymnast, I'm actually working the New England's this weekend. The New England's are in Massachusetts this weekend on Saturday. Is anyone going to the New England's at all? So that'll, that'll be the next step, as you get there, right? But I'm actually going to help represent our New England States at the New England's this year for the gymnastics tournament on Saturday. So you'll get there.
Yeah, we will.
There you will.
There we will.
I like that confidence.
Yeah, we will.
It's perfect.
Thank you very much.
That's awesome.
Thank you so much for being here. Next on the agenda, yes, you may leave if you wish, you can stay.
You want to, you guys can walk.
This is so fun.
I don't think we had to remind them twice.
Next on the agenda is the superintendent's update.
Well, to kind of keep with athletics for a minute here, congratulations to all of our winter sports. Our boys just finished, had some exciting last games with our boys, basketball, and our girls, basketball, still in it. Congratulations to them. We've got a big game coming up on Friday night. That is at 6:00 PM at the high school, and that is the winner of Penn Tucket versus Dover Sherburne. Is that right? Is that right? Okay. So go out, cheer for them, exciting games, been to a couple of those, and our girls continue to impress. Also, today's the last day of spring signups for athletics. That starts in a couple of weeks, so spring is here, and remember to move your clocks forward as well next weekend. Couple of other updates that I wanted to provide. One is since our last school committee meeting, our tiered focus monitoring, that's the compliance for the Department of Elementary and Secondary Education, so they were here for a site visit, and that's, you know, a lot of work by a lot of people, but really spearheaded by Dr. Burrows and Mr. Michael Azic, and pulling in all of that information in the area of special education and civil rights. And that's when they come, they meet with all of our principals, they interview them, meet with central office administrators as well, and then at the end of all of the document review, and some of that we've had here, because we've needed to update some policies and things as part of that work. But I just wanted to share some of the feedback that came in our exit interview with the Department of Education. We'll see this in a formal report. They have 20 days to write the report, we have 10 days to respond to it, but just some of the things that were said in our exit interview, I think it's really important to, and I'm just going to quote some of them here. So they did talk about the mountain of work that was completed by Stephanie, Corey, and others, and the level of detail and knowledge that all of our building leaders had, but at the same time, they've talked about, there's a lot that's changed when we do this regulatory process every 10 years, and the regulations, we have the mid-cycles with special education. But they talked about how our team leaned in with integrity, and that they said that there is no secret that we have something special in Foxborough, and that our administration is very knowledgeable, and even at the very granular level, which I think that really is a testament to our building leaders and our central office leaders, and as well as our teachers and our staff and everyone working every day with our students. They talked about the beautiful system of supports that we have in place for students, and that we are responsive to students' needs, when they looked at our mental health teams and the programming that we have for students, and they said that it's a very cohesive system, and it's very systematic in our processes and our procedures and our supports that are there. They also talked about how we've really done a lot of work in redefining special education in the last four years, and the programs that are there. School Committee has been a huge support with our budget, when we think about the different programs that have been in place at the elementary levels, and how those have changed to meet the needs of our students, and expanded, and that has been able to bring students, or keep students, bring students back from out-of-district placements, but keep students here by designing those programs, and it really is a testament to their special education department and the programs that have been put in place. And they talked about how we've met the challenges with grace and thoughtfulness. And to hear these words coming from the Department of Education and our liaison, it really, it was nice to hear and have them validate what we know is the good work that's taking place. And they talked about how it really permeates throughout every school, and that we're conscious of the challenges that take place, and that we should be very proud of the work that's being done. We are, but again, to hear it validated from an outside, you know, source, that obviously is, is very helpful to us, to hear it when we feel that and we, we see it. But again, I just, I thought it was really important, we'll hear more of those commendations, but to hear in that excellent interview that it was really genuine and very specific to what they observed from being in classrooms and interviews, as well as all the documentation that we had to provide. And the other things that I just wanted to kind of give a couple of examples, is they talked about in the evidence that we submit to show how we're meeting the different standards there, a couple of the examples that they gave, because we gave evidence from school committee meetings, and they talked about how they really appreciated going and watching. They went and watched school committee meetings, so when we think about the special education update that we have in the month of March, when they see the updates that we do for our goals, for our plan for success, and that's where they saw the cohesiveness. And to be able to see that and to see school committee take a very active role in that, they noted that as being a really powerful piece to the evidence that we presented. So I think that, you know, that says a lot about our school committee and wanting to hear those updates and to get that evidence, and that was noted as far as within the review. So the last part is really, they just love how the, the students are always our focus, and even involving them early on, like, through the focus groups that we've done to hear student voice. So a lot about equitable access, and just a lot of recognizing the hard work that's been done. So, long update on that part, but I think that it's important to make sure to note that, since that has taken place since our last school committee meeting.
Point of information. How, sorry. How frequent do they update? I mean, how frequent do we do those extensive reviews?
For the Department of Ed, that's every, it's every 10 years, and then it's, no, every six years, sorry, it's every six years, and then the mid-cycle is every three years for special education.
Okay.
I'm thinking knee-ask in my head, that's why I'm saying 10 years, so thank you for that question. It's every six years and then three years.
It varies, though. The mid-cycle is in some cases heavier on civil rights and not as heavy on special ed, and then, and then the six-year review would be heavier on special ed and lighter on civil rights. So they, they break it up for us, so that it's not completely daunting.
Through the cycle, right.
Through that cycle, they break it up for us, so that...
Step it out.
Yes.
But it was a daunting amount of work that Stephanie and Corey led, so really, kudos to the two of them.
Thank you.
Thank you very much. Congratulations.
Speaking of, kind of connecting there with the special education tonight, I know Michelle's not here, but we have, and I, I know that's where she is part of that, with our CPAC Fair, with the resource fair that's taking place, it's a community resource fair that's taking place over in Mansfield, and really, the purpose of that is to bring parents and community resources together for our special education students, to let them know what are some things that they might not be thinking about, and resources that are available to them that they might not know about. So it's open to all families, there's many, many resources that are available to students and members of our community. They anticipated having over 50 local and governmental resources that were going to be there at that fair, and that's in partnership with Mansfield, so that's taking place this evening. Tomorrow night, we have an IEP workshop with Alan Bloom, who's done a lot of work with us, that's virtual, that event's taking place from 6 to 8. Looking forward to next week, we've got Coral Palooza that will be taking place on the 14th. No School next Friday, Professional Development Day. I think Nathan might, you know, mention that as well. We've got the Aherne Carnival coming up.
He didn't know that was happening.
BIT Kindergarten Information Night, so there's a lot of things, so please check the calendar, is my point. There's a lot of things that are, that are coming up. And the last two things that I wanted to mention in my update is, one is, you'll remember back as a Teaching and Learning Highlight, when we had the Police Academy for our kindergartners and first graders.
Yeah.
So that's expanding a youth police academy. We have that tremendous support with our police department, and so they're going to have a Foxborough Youth Police Academy that is focusing on middle school, it's in the summertime, but that is out there for people to sign up for, and we're going to, lastly, send out a communication from the Logo Committee.
Sure.
That is just an update, it's coming out from the, the committee itself, and if people are interested in submitting a concept for consideration based on the criteria and the work that the committee has done thus far, and that is due on March 29th. But again, they have a whole empathy map that goes through from all of the work that's been done, from the survey that they've collected, the trends that they've seen, and very transparent, because that was part of their goal as well, is to communicate along the way. And as part of that, there's going to be on the website, where you can link to see the work along the way, what's been done, where they are within the process, if you're interested in submitting, and what that criteria is, as part of that process.
Thank you.
Awesome.
Thank you.
Thank you. Good update.
So, Dr. Berto's, again, people that are interested in dates should check on the Foxborough Public Schools website, that calendar. I got a couple of questions this past weekend, just at social events, about certain dates, and I, not having a child in the school, and sometimes blissfully unaware of what those dates are, but did always recommend that the school calendars, all activities, extracurriculars or co-curriculars are all on the school calendars on the website.
They are. They're by, they're on each of the school calendars, if they don't want to look at the district site. If they want to look at the district site, they can look at the calendar and see everything, it's color-coded by school. I did notice that the Community Resource Fair, for some reason, was not on the district site calendar, but, for instance, like, the IEP with Alan Bloom is on there for tomorrow night. We have found, too, that there's an extra box with an update on, through School Messenger and the owner of our website, how it works to have that. But to answer your question, yes, it should be there, and if people find that there's information that's not, please share that with us, so we can rectify that.
Thank you.
Thank you for the updates. Grand. Nathan, good report.
Tomorrow, seniors will be participating in the Credit for Life Fair in the morning. This year, they're moving the fair onsite, it's going to be in the cafeteria in the high school, and just a quick thanks to Ms. LeBeau and Mr. Servideo for all the hard work in planning that. Thursday will be College Admissions Night at the high school at 7:00 for anyone interested, and then, yes, eight days until our next day off, next Friday, for Professional Development Day.
Thank you very much. Thanks.
I love that. It makes me laugh every time.
Next, Student Opportunity Act. So it's Dr. Berto's and Dr. Burrows.
So I'll just start with kind of giving an overview as well as a reminder. So it was three years ago that you approved our Student Opportunity Act plan at that time, and really, the overarching goal of that act is to ensure that every student in the Commonwealth has access, regardless of their zip code to high-quality education. And it really takes districts to dive into their data and to disaggregate that data, and to see where we, disaggregate the data to see where we have any opportunity gaps. When we're looking at absenteeism, we're looking at academics, we're looking at all of those factors, and where they fall with any of our different groups. So it really came from a fiscal standpoint and from a policy standpoint. The fiscal part was a change in the Chapter 70 fund formula for our funding, and that was an additional $30 per student that came in through Chapter 70. So it's not like a separate grant, where we look at that grant and say, we're going to take that grant and spend it on this or on that. It really is the overall Chapter 70 funding formula. And then from a policy standpoint, it's really, it's focusing on those disparities in learning experiences of different groups of students, based on what our data is. And we have to dive into that and then put together a plan, a three-year plan. We did that three years ago, and three years ago at that time, we then had to do an amendment based on what they asked for, and then we had to do progress after you had voted. It is required for a school committee vote before we can submit the plan in April when it is due. So we've been through three years, we've done all of that, we're now back at the three-year mark, where we needed to go back and do a new plan, and bring it to you for your vote before we can submit it in April. But it really is focusing on where are our discrepancies, and teasing that out at a very granular level, and then where are we going to focus our resources, and looking at what we're already doing, and if we need to think about that differently, then to do that, but at the same time, it has to connect back to our district improvement plan, or our, in case, our plan for success, and then, at the same time, think about where we're going to be three years from now, because we'll have to submit progress updates throughout this three-year period. So I'll let Dr. Burrows talk a little bit more about our specific areas that we're focusing on within the plan itself.
So the process itself that the state has us go through in order to generate our Student Opportunity Act plan is fairly scripted. You'll, you'll notice in the report that you have in your hands, you'll notice that there is an introductory summary, just an overview of the plan, that kind of talks through what we did in that process, but essentially, the, the state started off with identified metrics.
So the process itself that the state has us go through in order to generate our Student Opportunity Act plan is fairly scripted. You'll, you'll notice in the report that you have in your hands, you'll notice that there is an introductory summary, just an overview of the plan that kind of talks through what we did in that process. But essentially, the, the state started off with identified metrics. So some of those metrics were chronic absenteeism, which we know that the state is concerned about. As you know, Foxborough has already demonstrated improvement in that area. And, and in addition to that, some of the other data points are our ninth grade passing rates, our out-of-school suspension rates, our five-year graduation rates. These are all, these are all state identified metrics. They're not metrics that we've generated. They're part of state reporting. And the Student Opportunity Act, it, it essentially prescribes that we look at those state identified metrics and come up with an approach on, on how we're going to improve those. The good news is if, if you, if you walk through what we've identified for those three areas of improvement that they're going to be, that we're going to be working on over the course of the next few years, the good news is that many of these are already in place. So we're just continuing to work on, for example, comprehensive tiered supports. That's how, that's how the state talks about multi-tiered systems of support. So as you know, it's, that has been something that we've already worked on for the past few years through our participation in the Inclusive Instruction Academy, through our participation in the SEL, SEL and Mental Health Academy through the state. We built those MTSS structures. So our intention is continue, to continue to use those structures to really target the areas of school improve, the areas of student improvement that, that our data is saying that we need to pay more attention to. You'll notice in addition to that collaborative teaching models, that's how the state phrases co-teaching. We've been expanding co-teaching over the course of the past few years. And you'll notice in the very last page of the report, there's a nice table that talks about how we're going to allocate funds over the course of the next few years. And one of the ways that we're going to be allocating funds is through that additional personnel. So it'll cover the cost of the additional staff that we're adding at the high school in order to support continued expansion of the, the co-teaching model. And then lastly, the targeted academic support and intervention, that really overlaps so much with the multi-tiered systems of support work that we're already doing, those targeted interventions and enrichment opportunities that we're offering to kids. We have win blocks at the elementary level and intervention enrichment blocks at the middle school level. And we'll continue to expand on those opportunities as we look at a new schedule at the high school coming out of our vision of a graduate work. So I, I think what you'll notice as you flip through the, the plan, you know, we, we do have some student outcomes that we want to improve certainly, but those structures are already in, in place for us to improve those, and we're just going to continue to, to work on those. As Dr. Bertos had mentioned earlier, coming out of the TFM, those, those commendations that we've received about how we've altered our approach to special education, one, one of the categories that we really do want to improve on is student achievement for our students with disabilities, improving those MCAS scores, improving the ninth grade passing rate for those students as well. And, you know, through those programmatic changes and the, and the work that we've done with multi-tiered systems of support, we believe we can, we can get there.
That's amazing. Lot of work.
Wow, yes, yes. Question, Brent, looks like questions?
First data, just from my own understanding and for anybody at home who's looking at this too. When we look at the number, I'm just going to focus on the district heat map, okay? When looking at the category for students with disabilities, what's the breadth of student that is included in that category? Meaning, we talking IEPs, we're talking physical, social, emotional, do 504s count? You know what I mean? Like I'm asking, like what's the, what's the breadth of that category?
It's any student on an IEP.
And 504s don't count? In that case, just asking.
Not to my knowledge.
Fine. Any student on an IEP for any reason. Okay.
We do see crossover though when we look at our high needs groups.
There you go.
You're going, you're going to have some of those that are hitting a couple of those different factors when it might be a student on IEP. It could also be low income.
Right.
Or it could be an L student too. We have a lot of them that are, they're crossing over.
And that's, and that, just for anybody interpreting, that, that's, if you're in a category, you're in a category. It doesn't, it doesn't, whatever, discount numbers that are where, where you're, you're in different population groups, right?
Right.
Fine.
Right. And so, but two, when we look at chronic absenteeism too.
Right.
Based on the number of absences and looking at the number of students, that's why we have to really get at the granular, granular level.
You do, yeah.
And look at who those students are.
Right. That makes sense. Thank you. And then follow-up from that. This is more, I guess, I, I, no, going to the yellow category, right? I'm assuming, given our raising numbers, those, you know, will have more robust data going into 24 and 25. Is that a reasonable assumption?
We have a higher percent, yes.
Right. And data's going to be the data, but there's more, there's more kids in that category, correct? All right, fine. And then this one's more of just a plug for in-house. A useful metric in teasing some of these out that I've found in the past in other environments is also, within the various subgroups, how many and who are new to the district in X, define your term, X number of years, right? Because gen, across other contexts, I've seen that kids who start in K, you know, and are with us or pre-K through, generally look more like the district norm than maybe a subgroup norm, if that makes sense. And it's just a worthwhile perhaps thing to look at if you have it.
Yes. And there's a new, well, it was new to me. I have not discovered within the DART tool, which we've used the DART tool, which is something from the Department of Ed to look into that. But then I discovered this weekend, and became very excited about it, sharing that with Cory as well yesterday, that it goes to exactly what you're talking about, where we can get it from the state level and look at it for Foxborough, meaning our students by grade level, the number that are on IEPs, the number that have come off of IEPs.
Yeah.
The number of those that have come off of IEPs that have been with us for at least two years. So all of those graphs and charts, I discovered those, which we've not had those to that level in the past. So that.
It's helpful.
It, it, it really, it really is. Because the more you look at something, the more questions you have and the more you want to dig in. But at the same time, we want to look at, well, what is that from a comparable level? When we look at the state, like are we way out of whack or are we, you know? And we see that we're doing much better.
Right.
But at the same time, it's important to know, to your point, how long have they been with us?
Well, because it, you know, it's induction and feeling a sense of belonging and, you know, you know, connectivity to their, 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 you know, the folks around their team and so on and so forth. So, oh, good, I'm glad.
And, and part of that too, that's, that's the gift of having multi-tiered systems of support to. It, it gives us that time to sit down and really look at the, the data on a granular level and identify, you know, if, if this particular student is not performing with their peers, why is that? And, you know, let's look at how long they've been in the district. Let's look at.
Absenteeism rate.
Their attendance rates. And let's see how we can affect change and how we can improve that particular student's achievement level. So that's really the gift of the systems that we have in place, even though there are certainly students that we want to improve their, their achievement, we want to improve their outcomes. But we have the systems in place and the structures during our school day where our teachers can sit down together and, and really identify what's happening and how can we improve.
Appreciate that. I mean, I'll reiterate something I've said over the last five years is that I appreciate as a parent in the community, parent of kids, and on school committee as well, that, that you and your team are not afraid of data. I mean, some of the numbers we've said in some of our various subgroups are, are low, but you still, you, you run the numbers and you present them and it's data, and that data can be used to help kids. And so I appreciate you just putting it out there as it is, analyzing it as professionals as opposed to whatever, trying to doctor the story of the data, but just the data is the data and the story comes out of the data. I appreciate that. Just, it's something I think that is, people should be aware, doesn't necessarily happen other places, and I believe it does happen here. And I appreciate it. So thank you again for putting out the, putting out the data, good, bad, indifferent, and then we can work with it.
And, and that data across the state, we know in order to, to close that gap.
Yeah.
It really is the, what we see is the multilingual learners, students that are living in poverty when we look at, you know, that, that low income, as the state's talking about students in poverty, and then our students in special education with disabilities. So looking at that, but at the same time teasing out, well, is it because of cognitive or is it speech or like what is it? We need to look to see, and then those crossovers too. Is it not as many students, but they just cross over different groups?
Mm-hmm.
It's authentic, I think.
Thank you, Sarah. And the last point I'll make is something you brought up, Dr. Burrows, in talking about it is true to form and as is typical, and I appreciate it, is the number of years and collective staff buy-in through the entire faculty that it takes to actually address some of these systemic issues is, I think, at least to my mind, it seems recognized because we've been working on a multi-tiered system of support for many years. You've been working towards co-teaching for many, many years, and it doesn't happen overnight, and it does take time, buy-in, and a push. And so I appreciate the consistency.
It's a lot of work for the teachers and our special educators and collaborating together in order to meet the kids' needs that are in their room. So there is, when you talk about the collaborative efforts, that's, that's, that's a huge piece.
All right. Rob?
Of the four areas that you're looking at, is there one that you think is at the greatest risk of not achieving your goals? I know it's early.
Heaviest lift.
Right.
Sorry.
So. It's too, I mean, a, a real answer is it's too early to tell, but.
Well, I, I do think we're moving the needle on, on all of these targeted areas, each of the four that, that we have listed here. We're, we're certainly moving the needle on them. I think for some of them, you're going to see more marked improvements at a faster pace than, than others. Like for instance, you know, I, I would say the, the, probably the most difficult to achieve is, is that last one, the, the increasing students with disabilities, MCAS performance, the, the percentage that are meeting or exceeding. And that's not really a, a judgment on, on, on Foxborough. It's statewide. That has been a consistent issue, and that's, that's really hard. Keep in mind, the test is not necessarily designed for, for some of our students with disabilities. So certainly we can, we can improve that, and we've been moving that needle slowly. When we look at our internal data, we're seeing, we're seeing growth scores on our internal assessments for our students with disabilities that are, are really promising and that we're really proud of. But it'll, it'll take a while to, to affect change on those. So I do think that will be the most difficult, but I don't think we're alone in that.
And I think that growth piece is the critical piece because we, we're looking for students with disabilities that they make a year's worth of growth. If you take MCAS as an example, it's, it's based on grade level standards. So if you're a third grader or a fourth grader, you're being tested on grade level standards. And we want to meet the student where they are and design instruction, especially designed instruction for them to have a year's worth of growth.
Yeah. Right, no, that all makes perfect sense. So thank you for that. Then my last question is, and this is just my memory is failing me, when do we as a committee get an update on progress against this plan? Is it every year or is it every three years?
It's every year.
Okay.
Yes.
That's what I thought. I just, I get all my, sometimes I get all my different acronyms of the different updates messed up. So thank you. I'll look forward to next year.
Yes. So like in the spring of 2025, we have to submit a progress update. So when we do that, we'll provide the update to you as well.
Okay. Yeah. I think I'm a year behind in my head. So, yeah, sorry about that. I'm like, that's two years. But it's not. Okay. Thank you.
So what we need this evening for you, unless you have any other questions, is a vote to approve the plan because we have to actually put that with the school committee date in that it was approved.
So right before we do that, I just, I just wanted to thank you for the thoroughness and Brent touched on it a little bit, I think. But what, what strikes me about the presentation is the words, the language, the, the protocols that we're attentive to in general, in our budget, in our thinking, in all of our planning, it just keeps coming back. It keeps circling back to, to strengthen these plans. So it's not like we haven't talked about co-teaching or all these things. And so I, I hope what's recognized is that our focus with us as a committee and with administration, the focus has maintained the light on where it needs to be for a general progress, which is also addressing these, these required plans. And so I think that's really important to take away. It's not like each plan is its little own little silo by itself. It's all wrapped into one.
Right.
I'm repeating, I think, what Brent said and, but I just think it's important to really hit, hit on that because we, we've been attentive to these topics that are so important for a great school system that are also answering all the requirements being put upon us. So I think that's, I just wanted to point that out.
So, yeah. I motion that we approve the Student Opportunity Act plan for Foxborough Public Schools as presented this evening.
Second. Seconded by Brent. So motion by Rob, seconded by Brent. Any further discussion about the plan as submitted? Seeing and hearing none, all in favor? That's a 4-0 vote for the plan again. Thank you very much for all the hard work. Thank you. Next is school committee vote on school choice, which we all know we have to do this annually.
Thank you for moving it up.
Any dialogue from the committee?
Questions?
Questions? Anything?
All comments, since years ago, I wanted this topic brought up sooner than we need it to be. And I appreciate the past chairs doing so. I appreciate admin doing so. And I'm still convinced by the argument of administration that the current setup works for us. And if anybody wants to bring those questions forward to any school committee member or member of the admin team, we always, like anything, welcome that. So if there's any community member wondering about that, it's something we discuss every year. And I'm fine voting on it tonight. I'm fine. But, because I have had a lot of questions in the past, but I just want to encourage anybody else who has questions to bring them up, even if we're not having a huge discussion here. It doesn't mean that those discussions haven't happened in previous years.
Thank you. Any other comments? So do we want to act on it at this meeting?
I think we should.
I'm comfortable with it. I like it just because we've done it before.
And, and we do have to act on it?
Yeah.
We actually have to say to not.
Not participate.
To reaffirm our non-participation.
Yes, please, Sarah.
I'd like to make a motion that we vote not to adopt the school of choice policy at this time in Foxborough Public Schools.
Thank you. A second on that motion?
Second.
So motion by Sarah, seconded by Brent to not adopt school choice for the Foxborough Public Schools, correct?
Yes.
Correct.
Right? Good. Any further discussion? All in favor? The motion, 4-0-0. Thank you very much.
Thank you.
And then we have an acceptance of a donation, which is.
And look who it's from.
And look who it's from.
Oh, my goodness.
Gymnastics.
Timely, timely, timely.
Full circle.
Very timely.
Would, anything about the motion?
About the donation?
No, sorry.
As you know, many of the boosters clubs wish to sponsor additional support in coaching, and that's basically what this $2,000 was for, the assistant coach that they had worked with, the group for the year. And basically, again, would be paid through the school department but donated directly by the boosters to the school department.
And you all do the hiring?
Yes.
Very good.
I motion that we accept with gratitude the donation of $2,000 from the Foxborough Gymnastics Booster Club.
A second.
Seconded. All in favor of the motion to accept the $2,000? That's 4-0-0. But with gratitude, again, thanking the boosters for stepping up and helping our 12 students that really, they stepped up to be participants. So great, what a great opportunity. that really, they stepped up to be participants. So great, what a great opportunity. Great, just great.
Fantastic.
And
Informational packet.
Yeah. And we have the warrant, we should, do we want to bring up for a future meeting discussion of the warrant signing?
Yeah.
Just so everyone, can I just speak to it for a second?
Please, please do.
Just so everyone understands the subject matter. When, and the hallmark of COVID, which coincided with me coming on the school committee, they allowed a change from three school committee members signing the weekly warrants to one designated warrant signer. I was voted in as the warrant signer, but when I was, we said that we would have an annual discussion, I believe it was annual or biannual discussion, on the progress and how things are going. We also, at that time, adopted the practice of doing a sheet, a summary sheet, where anything over $25,000 would be isolated. Any amount that's signed would be isolated and itemized for discussion or if anyone had a question. And of course, all the warrants, if you have any questions, you can certainly check them out. They're all public record, and you can always ask me, too, because I do, I do look over the, I look them over very carefully. So if you'd like to put it on the agenda, just to have, I don't, I don't think we need another formal vote. I think my vote was for my tenure, wasn't it?
No, it was, we vote every November. We missed it this year.
Okay. So if you want
So what I'd like to do, if I might recommend to the committee, would be we push it, we put the deliberation, the discussion of it with a greater detail, whatever is needed, to the next meeting. We'll put it on as an agenda item for the next meeting.
Please.
And then we can try to revisit our calendar so that we can be attentive to when the calendar reminder comes up in November.
Yes.
I guess, I guess I need my Outlook calendar to say, reminder.
It's been working, so, right?
Yeah, it's been working.
No, but, and I do like, I like, I like the discussion.
Careful that it's not discussion.
No, no, but I want us to have, I want to continue having the discussion.
That's all. Thank you.
Add it to the agenda, for sure.
So I do have a couple of other items as well.
Sure.
First is, I attended, for the second time in my public service career, the Attorney General's Open Meeting Law Training on February 7.
Thank you.
They, it was a good refresher. I do, I'm very comfortable that we have been operating very consistently in accordance with that open meeting law and with the guidances that come out in the email newsletters from the Attorney General's office on a regular basis. The next trainings coming up are March 26, April 11, and May 6. Anyone can sign up if you're a member of a public body that is impacted or that needs to adhere to open meeting law. You are welcome to participate in those trainings. Second, on March 12, the Policy Subcommittee will be meeting to review the policy that we postponed from the last time. That meeting, I think, begins at 4:30. On March 15, MASC is sponsoring a workshop on Chapter 70 funding. That is open to any school committee member.
That's great.
If you haven't received that. And I would like to add, as perhaps in our next meeting, an agenda item for us to discuss a day on the Hill on May 6, and perhaps have a more coordinated effort than we have typically had in participating in that event.
Thanks.
Okay.
Thank you very much. It was awesome last year.
Thank you.
Great, great point.
Any, anyone else sharing anything?
My, as my, in my role as liaison to the Recreation Committee, the only real news that I have are spring programs are open. And as always, everything's looking good. Tyson Tierra's is coming up fast at the end of the month. A big, huge event. The dad, the dad prom.
Brett, anything?
No, oddly, nothing.
Go Lady Warriors.
Yes.
Dr. Burdos, anything else? Mr. Yorkman, anything? So I wanted to thank Rob for attending the meeting in February, because you reminded me, and I attended the meeting on Monday. So I did the Open Meeting Law Training this Monday. So very, very good refresher, really, just to kind of go through, especially with, if you've done this for a little bit of time. And my only mention is to thank everyone for their attendance and support of our sports teams throughout the winter season. But as I have said before, I'm just going to say it again, we're reminding to cheer and support the students and have a great atmosphere at our Athletic Fence for Kids, of which, I am very proud that I think the Foxborough students do a great job.
They do.
There's, there's some, there are challenges across the state, but I think the Foxborough students do a great job of cheering on their players, staying focused, and celebrating sport for what it should be.
You're here.
So I hope everyone continues to do that, and I hope all parents follow suit.
You're here.
I have nothing, a motion to adjourn.
I'd like to make a motion to adjourn.
Second?
No one, just, we want to hang out.
Is there anyone, a second?
Second.
Second by Brent, motion by Sarah, seconded by Brent to adjourn the meeting. All in favor of adjourned tonight's meeting?
Aye.
4-0-0. Good night, everyone.
Thank you.